Couple of changes, Kelly sent them out about four thirty. So these are the final copy. So they were just two very minor things. So could we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes second.
Okay, all four, by guest. Okay, you're approved. Period of public expression, Miss Wanda. Okay. And let's see, can you do the report from the friends?
The friends did not meet because they are they are on hiatus, but they have some some stuff in the works for spring.
Okay, Elliot Treasurers report.
Okay, let's see here. Well, it sounds like a fabulous month, but that's because of the way in which our money is flowing. Let's look at the details a little bit, we'll try to keep it short. It's my first time doing this, so I hope that I can do it. Expeditiously, okay, starting at the beginning, the statement of the financial position. Our cash and treasury note balance in January was five thousand, five million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. That's considerably more than it was in December, and it's considerably more than it was in the same month in twenty-two. I've also, as Bill has gone in the past, I'm giving you the balances, monthly balances average in twenty-twenty-two, which had a range of four million, four twenty-nine, seven sixty-one to six million, three twenty-two, nine twelve. And we're right in the middle of that, as you would expect. The principal loan balance on the mortgage is five million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And you remember that matures in twenty-nine, and it's an interest rate of four point seven five. If you want to turn now to page, next page, page nine, I'll give you the some, I'm going to give you a rough picture first, and then we can look at it specifically together. The revenue was over a million dollars and expenses were under a quarter of a million dollars. So this is because we got about a third of our money from the taxpayers already. So let's take a look at it for a second, and also that way we can pick up on anything that that may strike you as worth looking at more closely. As far as the the current assets here, you see, we've got the checking and the investment, the checking savings and investment monies here at three million, two twenty-nine, three fifty-three. I don't, it's obviously, we could get into the fixed asset stuff, but we generally don't, and I don't think we will today either. And then if you Okay, so. Okay, so we'll look at the revenue expenses, starting on page nine. You'll see here at the top of the page, it's pretty easy to spot at the Union Free School District payment of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, and that's only part of what they gave us. If you skip to the two pages down, you'll see, under other income, referendum tax levy came in at three hundred and six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. So again, a total of more than a million dollars that came in in tax levy money. And that is against expenses, which as you see, were limited to what they show here. Two hundred, in the middle of page three, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So obviously, it's a huge revenue expense situation in this month. But again, it's it's what you would expect because of the money flowing from the taxpayers. On the expenses of the whole, you'll notice that they, that that number I gave you, two thirty-three, nine thirty, is a little bit more than we spent in January of twenty-twenty-two, but not much. And I think that the difference, the couple of items that I noticed and that others have pointed out already, that seemed maybe worthy of question, where the electric bill, which appears on page three at fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, I understand this is two months' work, right?
Yes.
And that's basically it.
The electric, some of our utility bills fall on a funny month split, and so sometimes we pay two in one month, sometimes it's one in one month, it's just, it depends how LIPA chooses to.
Yeah. Are there any questions so far about, is the basic revenue and expense?
Yes, I do have a question, actually, a comment. I can understand as far as the assets, you know, where we have a reporting there, and I think we had discussed this at our meeting the last time. But as far as like investments with the other assets, I'm looking at page seven in particular.
Yeah.
Like, this is, if it's possible, I'd like to see a second column showing previous year so that we can compare those types of things.
I'll see if I can add that column.
It's not a QuickBooks standard for this.
For this report, that's the one, thank you, because that's what I have to look into.
This is a balance sheet report, and the other is the loss report, the profit loss, loss and gain year to year comparison.
Right, yeah, even if this is, whenever possible, if we can.
I mean, I could probably.
You could print up.
Print it out for the second.
I can, I can print out the pre, I could give you the previous year, like the previous month and the previous year as a as a second report, so you could have both of them to look at.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be on the same.
But they wouldn't be on the same page.
Right, or if we just have a, even on page six, where you're giving your summaries of things, just just so from a contextual purpose, if we know, you know, what's happening with, you know, the bonds, the investments and things of that nature, brokerage accounts, but we had spent, you know, some time on that before, and it doesn't have to necessarily be on a, you know, month-to-month basis, but every once in a while, I think I'd like to be, I'm interested in seeing how that is tracking along and how we are doing.
You're talking about the
The dime investment.
The earnings on the, on the investment costs?
Yeah, just, you know, I just want to know, or just their bet, their balance.
The dime bet, balance and cash are put together on this report, like I used to do it, so.
Right.
Nothing really outside, that will change much outside, you know, depreciation maybe.
Well, the dime won't, you wouldn't be able to compare it until.
And what about our government cash?
At the time would have been.
The government bonds.
The treasury notes.
Treasury notes, yeah. That's in the cash, what's that up there?
So I would, I would also say, I think Al Costa is going to make some some recommendations in terms of how how things sort of are booked and look moving forward. So I would just sort of err on the, before we start switching things now, maybe we we wait, we sit with Al, we say, Al, you know, like,
How do you want it?
How do you want us to do this? What is the best way for us to look at it? Because if it's not a QuickBooks standard report, and I'm trying to say this in a way that isn't gonna sound not good. In QuickBooks, you can merge reports, but in merging reports, the reports then open up in Excel, and then I can just change the numbers any way I want, right? So we don't want to to add that layer to it, right? Does that make sense? I mean, not, not that I would, but, you know, like, there is, if if I use a QuickBooks standard report, the report is the report, it spits out the numbers. But if if we're starting to talk about merging reports, you know.
Well, I, I, I understand, and I think it's probably better, let's wait for him to come, and then we can
Well, the other thing is, maybe something where we want to do it after, after it's been one year, we've done the investments, do a report and do it in kind of the times when the different bonds are due, and do it then, because it's not going to make a lot of sense to do it all the time. And it's, I'm not a hundred percent sure what information we're going to get from it if we do it monthly. But we might get, we'll get more information if we do it.
And I don't want to.
At milestones.
I don't want to steal, because Treasurer Sarukha and I have already had this conversation, I don't want to steal thunder, but we did have a conversation about quarterly reports as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think that one of the things that's come up, especially when you look at the, the revenue and expenses year-to-date display, which is what we're going to go to next.
Right.
You know, there's many things in it that are interesting, but there's also a lot of things in it that are not very useful, especially when you're taking it a month at a time, because of the kind of fluctuations we talk about, the way income flows, and the same thing with expenses. So what I'm wondering about, and I know we have to do certain things legally or whatever, in terms of things we must look at every month, we have to balance certain things every month, you have to, you know, balance statements and so forth. On the other hand, trying to analyze expenses or income on a monthly basis is is not really illuminating. And what I'm wondering is if we could streamline the monthly reporting and then do, in the third, in each quarter, do a, something like this, revenue and expenses year-to-date versus annual, compared to twenty-two to twenty-one to twenty, you know, this kind of, you know, long-range analysis, looking at it a quarter at a time, because I think quarter would tend to get past the problem of the flow of tax money, it would tend to get past other problems even, you know, that that have to do fluctuations.
Salary ebooks, so like, for example, the bill for ebooks came into the tuna, sixty-six thousand dollars. You'll see it, check for it in there. And so that's, that's a once-a-year thing, which, you know, if you're looking at things monthly, you'll be like, oh, we spent ninety percent of our budget and, you know.
I'm sure it's going to have some recommendations on that, and I, but I agree with you, yes.
I think it's a great idea to do that, and I mean, I think Kevin Burden, we had Tim a long time ago about reports, and he said, you guys too rich, you made financial reports. I think he said, you know, we do a balance sheet, for his board, it's a balance sheet and a P and L, and that's it.
I would say we do a lot more reports here than we did.
Yeah, I think there are a lot more.
How would we politically, how do you proceed with making those kinds of decisions? Do we, as a group, vote on it or propose?
More reports or less reports?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think that would be a board decision, but I think also we should say to our auditor, this is solely information we put out there, you know, like, is, are we required to do all these reports? Can we do viewer reports? In the interest of transparency, I think sometimes people err on the side of giving people too much information, but and and I don't, I don't want to get into the habit of of voting Snowden, but one of the things he said was, when you get, when you are looking at everything, you see nothing, right? And so, you know, that, what we could be doing is hurting ourselves in the long run in producing all of these reports, because you're looking at too much, right? What are the financial reports there?
It's like forty pages.
It's like forty pages, right? You know, here's the thing, I sit on the school board, the financial reports on the school board are a hundred pages.
Well, you have to have the statement.
And that's the thing is, you're like.
You have to have them.
Do all this stuff.
We really are only giving three reports here, and you have to do the check detail.
You do have to do.
So I, I don't think they're giving too much.
So it's going to go to best practice?
I wouldn't know where we cut that, yeah.
But it also depends on how detailed the treasurer's report has to be.
Yeah.
Versus, there would definitely be.
I mean, I can, I can tell you, you know, there are, there are other libraries that, you know, the treasurer's report are the QuickBooks statements, and that's it. There isn't a narrative, I think it's great that the board here does a narrative, right? Because it sort of says, hey, we've looked at it, we've, you know, seen these things that, you know, are, you know, things we want to point out, and, you know, so.
I like the.
Okay. So you're on budget versus actual now?
Yeah, budget versus actual. Again, in my narrative here, I'm, I'm, I took the position that, that the expenses were not out of line with a year ago, and they are typical of the month. Comparison of the individual lines is of limited usefulness, but we can look at it for a moment and see if you agree or not, I mean, we'll go to page, it starts on page twelve. And if you kind of, I guess, one, one way to do this is quickly scan down the percentage of budget column, because unless, you know, if if we're spending, you know, ten percent or more of the budget already, then you'd say, well, there's a problem, maybe, but there's not too many of them.
Children's books.
But, you know, the first number that jumps out at you, of course, is is on the income side, that the fact that we've already received thirty-three point nine percent of the, you know, money we're expecting from there, so that is a huge anomaly, it needs to be pointed out. I don't see any, thirteen point three here on periodicals, I don't know, anybody worried about that?
No.
On the second page, on page thirteen. Everything is.
Yes, that charge is two hundred and forty-five percent.
But you're only budgeting for sixty dollars.
Yeah, that, that's like, it's like this, so it doesn't really right.
I'm up to page fourteen, I'm still not seeing. Oh, here's a big one here, the utilities, but that's the thing I was just referring to earlier. But it's nineteen point eight percent of our utility budget for the year. But part of that is because we paid part of twenty-two in here, right?
Yes, and then the other part of that is because of all our issues with our our wells and not functioning to the best of their ability, like, the bill is, like, it's increasing.
It's usually five to seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's weird for it to be eight thousand dollars in the dead of winter, so. And we did check, nobody's mining cryptocurrency, so it's not that.
And then on the last page of this, page fifteen, of course, we see that the net other income on on the, that's referendum money, you know, it's a hundred percent of the budget, but that's exactly what we expected. So again, it's, I mean, again, all I'm saying as far, as far as the useful into this, it becomes more useful the larger block of time you're covering, because it it weighs things out. But the question is, you know, how and and with what, at what level of detail do we look at these things every month? And and how do we do it as expeditiously as we can?
So I do want to let you know that in when I, when I put the budget in originally, as compared to the budget from the previous year, maybe not, I did notice that I left the nine hundred and five thousand for the mortgage for the year out of this referendum tax levy, which is why that says a hundred percent. It is now in there, so when you see it in February, it will be.
So this would have been a third?
That would have been a third.
I should have said a third, yeah, okay. Good, well, see, that's the, okay, good.
But this is a report that I have to run on the first day of the first, the last day of the month, at end of day, or the first day of the month, before we do anything.
Right.
So I can't go back and edit this report after.
Is there any other questions or comments getting in terms of this report, we're up to this point?
You did a good job, Ellie.
Well, thank you.
Good story.
The, the next set of things, of course, are very different in their nature, I mean, the check detail, which begins on page sixteen, this is a lot of checks here. And then we've got the the warrant, which follows that, beginning on page
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two, yeah, yeah. Now, in this case, of course, we are talking about just a listing that has been, in a sense, double or triple checked by different entities as we're going into this. So, for example, I, you know, I'm new to this, but I personally know that I personally looked at every item that's on this warrant, and I have a list, you know, where I checked everything against the checks I was signing and so forth. So what these represent are very specific transactions that are, you know, verified through, either through the the software itself or through the multiple people that look at them.
Well, and they also have to reconcile the bank statements, so.
With the back statement, so, and that has been done, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, essentially, unless you are aware of any errors in here, we could move past that, and we have a new one now, which is the payroll details, which we haven't done with that, right? This is our first time we've done it. So you've got an enormous amount of information here, which is starting on page thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, yeah. Which is all the payroll details for two payrolls. And in my cover sheet, I've, I've mentioned the total on each one. So the, and again, they're, they're just, they're quite customary. They're exactly what we would expect them to be. Payroll one is in the amount of thirty-five thousand, hundred and six dollars and five cents. Payroll two is thirty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. And all of this is, like I say, quite customary, all this detail is here. And this is, we are obligated now, right? This is a new.
We are, we, we are, so we are obligated to approve the warrant for payroll. So that is why this is here, and you have that payroll liability to look at and see that, you know, I didn't pay myself fourteen thousand dollars, and Wanda didn't pay herself fifteen thousand dollars, and the other five thousand dollars went to the rest of the staff, right?
Okay.
I think.
So no further questions, can we have a motion to approve?
Are we going to do the, just the financial report?
All at once, or if you wanted to, you could do them all on a consent to.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to approve the financial reports, the warrant, number one, two, seven, four, four, two, one, two, seven, seven, eight, and the payroll.
I'll second that, very good, save my voice. Okay, Ellie, director's report?
We didn't approve.
Oh, whoa, whoa.
I was going to whisper that, too.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
I did, I made the motion.
Okay, all in favor, okay, I, okay. Now, Ellie.
Okay, so. I think I'm still saying it, and you're all just tired of hearing it. Like, I just need to get out of the weeds, but I'm almost there, I did say the bill, I only have seven things left on my list before, before I go on vacation, which I'm very excited about. Um, so again, I do want to mention that we have a new library baby who also arrived early at a really inopportune time, if you remember. Rachel's baby arrived as we all went off to Nyla, and Nancy's baby arrived the morning of the African-American read-in in which she was going to participate. So while we are glad that, and very happy the babies are here, I would really just like them to follow a sketch. That works for the library.
And they named her Nyla.
They named her Nyla. And I promise, I did not insist that they name her Nyla.
And I think the date.
And, and we had a little fool going of of when this baby was going to be born, and Anne did in fact when. So we, we can certainly discuss the, this next one under old business, but I do want to let you know, you may have noticed that while our big ugly hose is still there, it is not dumping water into the dry well. So I used, I used to get woken up by my alarm, but every morning, Richard sends me a picture of the well gauges to let me know that they are set, they are holding steady at zero, which is exactly where they want them to be, because that means the water is diffusing out of the well as it is supposed to.
Your report says yucky.
Yucky, yes, they were very yucky. And I'm going to be honest, I was going to then put in parentheses, this is a technical term, but I didn't. But trust me when I tell you, they were very I've seen video. So they are cleaned, we are in good shape. The plumbers were here today to do measurements, as you know, our friends at PW Grosser would like to remove sections of the interior pipe to see if there is, yeah, I'm going to use the word again, yuckiness on the interior pipes. And so, so that's where we're at, and the staff were troopers, because it was pulled in the spill line. So I also met with Brad and Nancy from Creative Library Concepts on Zoom to talk about stack replacement. They know that we want to co-do that in conjunction with the flooring, I spoke with Steve, the flooring guy, he totally gets it, he's like, I want to order the stuff and have it in the warehouse, so when you tell me those stacks are ready, and this room is, this building is empty, we can like, you know, coordinate that, so everybody's in on coordinating it. Brad threw his back out, and so he couldn't be here, and it was worse than he thought, so we actually sent one of his installers who came in and did all the measuring, and so they're working on sort of a concept and design to maximize the space on this, this lower level. And once we have that, we have that. Our spring newsletter is at the post office tomorrow, right? And will be in the building tomorrow, and we're excited about that. I really, really cannot wait for Rachel to come back, because I'm, as, I love doing the newsletter, but I hate doing the newsletter, it's, it's very labor-intensive. Our photo, I happen to think, is one of the cutest ones we've done. It's the team having a party celebrating National Library Week in.
That had to be one.
Um, yeah, so we're, we're very excited about that. Library advocacy day is Tuesday, I think it's really great that I had staff who were interested, really excited to go, so Wanda and I are going to go up the night before on the PLDA bus, there is professional development, but there is also, just came up, a tour of the state library. So I don't know, I think I'm going to register for that.
I was going to ask you about it.
Yeah, like, that, that seems way more fun. And also really important and staff development, too. Also a technical, so we have that, and then our two new librarians, Emily and Anthony, are going to join us in the Capitol on Tuesday, going up on the Wednesday bus. If you have a chance to contact our local legislators and let them know that Governor Cook's budget that she put out is devastating for libraries, especially the terrible cuts to the construction grant program, I believe she cut it by twenty million, which is terrible. This library, as you know, benefited greatly from the New York State Construction Grant Program. Libraries all over the state need that money in order to update their buildings, infrastructure-wise, libraries in upstate New York are in much worse shape than the ones on Long Island. But also the construction grant program is a win-win-win for every industry, right? So it's not just libraries, it puts New Yorkers to work, right? It works for our trades, our electricians, our plumbers, our craftsmen, our mill workers, all of those people. So, you know, the push is always to get that construction grant money back in and up, and it's bonded money, so.
How do we make our patrons aware of this so that they can?
That they can support it, you know, I would say, you know, talk, talk it up amongst your friends. Getting closer to lobby day, there'll be stuff that Nyla pushes out, which I will push along to you, and I would encourage you to push along to to your, your, your friends and loved ones.
I know you were in the weeds, it could also be a letter to the editor.
It was. I, actually, it's so funny you should mention that, because we're trying to, we were trying to schedule the the photo for the Sab Harbor Express where Open Catalog, I guess now it's the twenty-seventh East where Open Catalog for the spring and summer. And I said, I can't do that date, because we'll be up in Albany advocating for this, and oh, by the way, blah, 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 blah. So like, I was hoping they would take the hint, but I can certainly reach out and write a letter to the editor, encourage.
I don't know if he does the kind of level Sab Harbor stuff anymore with this move to the start.
I mean, we certainly, we can certainly have that conversation with Chrissy, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's, it's better coming from the express.
Yeah.
But it affects all the libraries.
It does.
That, you're right, it does affect all the libraries, so Chrissy actually would be.
So I'll reach, I'll reach out to Chrissy and then I will also reach out to. Is Chris Gumi, give me, give it a, East Hampton Star two?
He might be.
I'll reach out to Stephen Coates, he's a library trustee over in Bridgehampton now and Chris, um. Again, Shabby, thank you, um, also has some library connections, so I think we have enough people. That we can reach out to, it'd be like, this would be a good story, right? So that's, that's that, that's, that's my pitch for libraries and library lobbying. Um, again, I'm gonna be on vacation, um, the seventeenth through the twenty-sixth and then we'll be up in Albany, but I'll be back in the building. March first, um.
Pity you're well reading every morning, right?
Getting my, yes, Richard still has to send me a picture, even though I'm in Florida of my wells. So, my yucky, yucky wells, uh, my not so yucky wells, the keen wells for now. Everybody not gone with, um, so the statistics are what they are, the one thing I do wanna point out. Is the E reference. I, I don't know why it's eight, it's so sad, um, you know, I just. You know, January is clearly not a, a month for deep research, um, or database usage. And I did look through, cause it comes off something which is called the WAM stats or the Web Access Management Stats, which are put together. For us by the stuff, the cooperative library system and, um. We did not have the fewest uses, I think that honor went to the Ketchikan New Suffolk Library, um, that had four. So, um, you know, what are there fifty, fifty-six libraries in Suffolk County?
The, uh, for the total physical collection circulation, the renewals, but the number is up significantly.
So. So I will say that that is generally pushed by. In library use and by renewals, so automatic renewals. Really do sort of skew those statistics and the renewals were impressive.
Had we previously in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one automatically tracked or tracked automatic renewals?
We did, but if you compare January, um, uh, to December, it's, it's. About the same.
Right, but.
So use of, use of the library, I would say, is up, but also we're comparing it to maybe. Maybe not so much in twenty twenty-two, but twenty twenty-one was definitely still COVID. And twenty twenty-two, you know, January of twenty twenty-two, we were still operating under a lot of COVID restrictions, at least in this library. So I think that that skews the number as well.
What's the renewal policy now? How many times?
Six.
Six.
Six renewals?
Six renewals, so just if nobody's on hold for it.
Six.
Automatically renews six times.
And you get a call?
And then you get, then you get a bill. Because you have to replace a book that has been out of building.
The other number I was impressed with was the website visits.
Yes, I think we're driving more traffic to our website, um. You know, there's, there's a lot more information going up on there, um, and in terms of. Registration for programs and, um, you know, some of the social media is really pushing people to the website.
That's a key number, and I wanna discuss that later on when I give my report, because there's something that's gonna tie into that.
Social media?
No, no, website visits.
Website visits?
Yeah. But I like the fact that it's. However you're driving traffic to the website, that's key.
Yeah, and we, we want people to go to the website, um, for, for information.
That was the statistics were.
Statistics are really, I was really excited, I'm gonna be honest, I was really pretty excited about our staffs this month, um, and it made me feel good about. Um, being in the weeds and Wanda being in the weeds and everybody on staff sort of being like, we're doing a lot and it's. Because we're doing a lot and I think that that's indicative of people finally feeling comfortable and ready to. Come back to the library after COVID. Um, because it, when I came here in January of twenty twenty-two. Programming-wise, we didn't have an adult programming librarian and our program was very limited, so. Actually, if you look at adult programming this month, you know, thirty-five programs as compared to eighteen programs. And of those eighteen programs, most of them were online, so. Those are the, that's sort of what we're thinking, and in twenty twenty-one, all of the programs were online, so.
Still good, it's only showing up, we're trying to.
We like, we like our weekend. And then, so also new to the party, um, as, as per, per, uh. Paper, uh, would be the employee, um, or the personnel report, so your first personnel report. Is actually, just so you all see it on one page, um. You did recommend a four percent raise to all staff members. So I wanted you all to see exactly what that looks like and exactly what everyone is getting paid. I gave you hourly for obviously our part-time, everyone who is full-time in this building is salary. So if you see somebody with a salary, they are a full-time employee.
So in the future, we'll just see the changes.
So as, as an example, you know, next, next month in March. Liz Hughes will be joining the team, when you get the, um, personnel report, it'll say, you know, like. Nancy is, is on leave because she had a baby, Liz is, you know, has, has, has entered the chat.
Okay.
All right.
That's good, thank you. And I think we need, oh, question?
Is Anne, who is the tech, emergency technology librarian who left and. Was gonna come out on weekend.
Andrew Tarantelis?
Yeah, so is he?
He is hourly now.
Is he still coming here?
He is, he's here on Sundays, just Sundays.
So it's the reference library.
Yeah, so he's, he's, he's. Been demoted, not demoted, but title changed to reference librarian, because he's not fulfilling that emerging technologies role anymore. Andrews, not Andrew, Anthony is the emerging technologies librarian.
A reference librarian on a Sunday?
We do. He actually, he does, um, on Sunday, he does answer a lot of IT questions. Um, you know, I do wanna be very clear, clear with this board, um, but also the community. Um, the emerging technologies librarian is not the only person in the library that can answer IT questions. IT is reference and so every one of our reference librarians is ready, willing and able to answer whatever. IT questions that you have or also able to do a one-on-one with you. Um, in terms of if you have an issue with, you know, using Canopy or using, you know, your iPad or. Trying to mail merge, the only librarian who can't help you with mail merge because it is the odd, I understand it, is me.
Now you have your IT in-house, you can probably reverse those and put IT in-house and then vacant.
I should also probably capitalize my last name, but, um. Remind everyone that I sent you your board packet at twelve thirty AM on Saturday, the sixteenth. So, slap, Michael.
Okay, homework late. So we need approval on this and anybody wanna make motion? Yes, I so moved. All four, alright, alright, alright. I'm just, a- a- apropos to these employees' payrolls and salaries, at some point, can we get?
Pictures, so we.
Something like that.
Here's where I'm at, I am happy to, I think between all the newsletters. Pull together everyone on staff, I just, they're his staff that has been here for such a long time. They're gonna be a little bit sad that you might, you know, do you need a look?
But you know, be on the website, like when you have our staff or whatever it is, are you gonna have?
There's no picture, yeah, that's on purpose.
Oh, why is that?
Um, because I think that, you know. There's, I mean, there's a little bit of privacy there, like we're in the library, we're there to help you, you know, whatever the case may be, but I don't think people would love their, their faces on the website. And it's really not something other libraries do either, um, you know, I have no problem with my face on the website, but it's not that.
I'm so bad at that.
Other thing is, is it's. It's hard to have your, your full name in your picture, you know, in, in the same place.
And your salary.
Oh, thank you, it was such a relief.
And so, and I do wanna say, because we do work with the general public and people are weird. Not this library per se, but I have worked in other libraries and as a young librarian, when I was much younger, skittier, prettier. Um, all of those things. I had a patron who had a real big inappropriate crush on me, um, because he was very old and I was. Eighteen years old and, um, and it was uncomfortable, um, and so, you know, we never wanna put anybody. In that position and, you know, with the internet these days, it's.
Alright, your argument is so noted.
Still, it would be useful to have internally to, or especially for new board members to have.
Well, I will.
Yeah, you could get the newsletter.
I will take all of the newsletter pictures and keep them out and probably. I think between the, are we up to a fourth newsletter with all of this on it? I think we've gotten us all by now, so.
Well, and you've gotten people who've come and gone.
We've gotten people who've come and gone, you know what, I'll cross the map. Like when you're not friends with anybody, somebody anymore in the yearbook, um, so, yeah, we can do that for you.
Okay, committee reports, uh, and with personnel?
We did not.
Finance Elliot?
Uh, we met and, uh, it was, uh, my first meeting with the group, uh, we discussed a range of issues, some of which we talked about earlier. Today, when we're talking through the financial report, uh. Obviously, our decision was that for the most part, we would continue as far as the treasurer's report. Initially to try to, as best I could, to duplicate what Bill has been doing and this is something that. You're all used to, but we will gradually try to add certain new elements to it, as we discussed. Possibility of more quarterly focused, possibility of some new reports that we might develop. Now, part of it, of the timeline is that we've got, um, we've got our auditor meeting with the board in. April or May, right? And, uh, we've got further, uh, advice that will come in over the course of the spring, so it'll be a gradual process, I think, that we evolve. How we deal with financial reporting and I really think that's basically all we just discussed was. Was techniques of logistics of reporting, because obviously fundamentally, the finances are in excellent position as far as all that goes. Um, well, we do need to evolve some procedures for how, how decisions get made about reinvesting income when it comes, uh. Uh, you know, when those things come up and so forth, and so hopefully you'll see some, uh. Growth in some of these areas over the coming months. But that, I think it's pretty much, is that pretty much what we covered? I think so, yeah.
Building and grounds, Dan's not here, but right, Dan, if you're there?
Dan told me, he's not, um, Dan told me I could report on, on his behalf, um. We had a, Dan and I were supposed to have a brief meeting after the finance committee meeting and, um, Bill stuck around for it, um, so. Remind me of anything I forgot, but the three major goals of the, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, which we know from the last meeting, is to work on. Um, getting a mason to, you know, sort of take care of the brickwork here, but also take care of the grout in the, on the front steps and the. Gelsleben Plaza, um, and also to move quickly with the floor replacement and the stack replacement with the goal. Hopefully that that's something that can happen before, before summer. Um, so working very hard to coordinate that and the committee is, you know, as soon as we have those. Those sort of, that quote and those pictures from Creative Library Concepts, it's gonna come together pretty quickly for a recommendation to the board to. To approve those, um, we did also talk about the HVAC, um, and we are, again. We might not have to talk about this in old business, cause I'll run out of stuff, um, but. We're looking forward to seeing the report of the report from Lizardos Engineering. Uh, which they told me that they're just waiting for, um. A couple of manufacturers to give them specs for, for equipment and equipment sizes, so. Um, they're hoping to get us that report by the end of, of February, which is almost here and, um, I think that's everything we discussed.
Stacks and.
Yeah.
So you're gonna talk about that later?
Yes.
At least, at least the flooring, okay, that was about it, um, policy and long-range planning. Glory's not here, but we did not meet.
We did not meet, but we, we aspire to meet, um. Long-range planning, um, as a seminar is not something which. SCLS offers, um, but, um, I've been, I'm. Asking my colleagues, who they've had to come in to discuss long-range planning and hopefully we will find somebody to come in to do that soon. Or I think maybe the committee should just meet and sort of come up with a, with, with a plan to at least get this started.
Sounds good. Michael for outreach and public relations.
I was told that this was the Community Outreach and Fundraising Committee, but that's okay, you can call it whatever. Okay, whatever, um, in, in any event, there were just a number of topics, I'm not gonna go into great depth in any of these. And I know that Dan is probably keeping a timer on, um, what I'm going to say here, but there are three different components that I want to address. We did have a email meeting, uh, as per, uh, Kelly, uh, back in, uh, early February, it was last week and there were a number of topics. One was, um, as far as fundraising is concerned. And this gets into the website traffic and the whole bit, I wanna add. Tabs that are going to include several different components, one is bequests. Testamentary bequests, uh, and this is all towards fundraising, the next is, um, towards. Um, foundational support, you can have different, you can have different foundations supporting, uh, one another and the other one is corporate. Support, alright, I'll take the easiest one for us, testamentary dispositions. But I'm gonna put together a form that people can follow, they can access it easily on. Uh, the website and you can just put this, you can get a, uh, either a new will or a codicil to your will or whatever, just simple language. I would like to leave JJ M out, X amount of money to, uh, and we can have any number of different. Uh, things that they can donate towards or just make a general donation or percentage of their state. We've had this, um, in the last couple of years, we received money, uh, in each of the last couple of years and I know that. There are gonna be some other testamentary requests that are gonna be coming due in, uh, in the very near future, as a matter of fact. Um, and if we can get one, two of those every year, it's absolutely a game changer. Um, so this is gonna be a very, very easy process. Um, there are a lot of local libraries that do this and a lot of other charitable organizations that do it. Um, I checked also the website to the New York Public Library, which has. Links and different tabs for maybe forty or fifty different types of ways to make donations. Okay, we're getting involved from the fundraising aspect and of course they are just a little bit bigger than we are, but. I don't see any reason other than having lines in front of our, you know, building that we can't do pretty much the same thing. Especially on a corporate sponsorship and a foundational sponsorship, uh, type of thing, and. Again, we can make suggestions and Elliot, I know that, you know, we had discussed, uh, this before, so I, Kelly, maybe we can. Get together with whoever is handling the website traffic, we will agree in committee as to a generalized format. That we will, uh, put there for people who wanna make testamentary dispositions and trusts and wills and other, um, gift, giving type of things. There will be also a, should be a tab that, uh, there in case you wanna donate at any time without doing any sort of. Testament.
Some at the top, I think it says give.
Yeah, yeah, so.
On the front page?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so. Which is, which is absolutely fantastic, um, I know Kelly is big on chocolate and swag. You know, you can do just like, you know, in, in child thirteen, WNT or whatever it is that they, you know, you know, you give this amount. You get a bag, you get a hat, you get all, all these different things, all that stuff is going to help, so that's just one part of the fundraising. The other, uh, thing that, um, we had, uh, discussed just in generalized terms. Was getting some of the old standbys restored and I talked to Glory after the last meeting at the house tours. And the one for the books, uh, were two things. And the one for the books, uh, were two things, and the question that, uh, came up as far as the house tours was concerned is, do you think people really? Wanna have people in their houses, given everything that's been going on health-wise? I'm not sure. I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
They, they also had a little bit of a problem with. Recruiting houses, the person who's recruiting. Kind of started to knock on people's doors and stuff, and that was not seen favorably.
Yeah.
Um, people aren't volunteering this much.
The, I can tell you that the friends, it's, it's. The friends have discussed the house tour a lot this year, or before they went on winter hiatus, and they are. Not going to revive that house tour, um, and they said. It, again, it was because it's impossible to get houses, they also said. Everybody's houses kinda looks the same on the outside now, um. You know, it's.
We can, we can do a twist on this, we can just pick random houses and say, Harvard, just show.
That is it, like the, uh, house tour flash mob?
Yeah, right.
What about changing it to a garden tour?
Um, somebody else does a garden tour. They also talked about, the friends talked about doing. An art gallery tour.
That would be, that, rather than a month, that's that once a month where they do. And they just go to the different galleries.
And that would end here, um, and we would, of course. I mean, we always have somebody fabulous in our art gallery, but we would make sure we have somebody extra fabulous in our art gallery, and maybe have that artist here to talk a little bit. Um, and then it would culminate with cocktail party in the.
Then the other, uh, one was the one for the books, which I know was also wildly, uh. That was really very, very popular, you know, and that's a limited amount of people, you know.
Yeah, the problem with the one for the books was the amount of money we made on the last one, once the building, we made a lot of money with buildings. In the middle of the building, after the building was turned. There were one woman who spent more on her cocktail party than she actually did. Which was a downside, now we didn't have to pay anything, cause it was her donation to the library, but it was. It was a negative, it was hard to justify doing it again. After that experience.
Right, but you know, the, the idea is also that those events don't necessarily have to be. Money makers, so it'd be nice if they were, but it's, it's something for the library.
I, I think that was part of the reason why that it took, I mean, it basically. Took a dive of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Another.
From the amount we could make.
Yeah.
Good talk.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Right.
Different scale, but.
Right.
If you went back to the original one. You didn't have, done have to do the dinner, but where you pick a book. And that is what you talk about, when, when it went to the authors, it was also hard to find the authors. New authors each time, each year.
So, could you, um, indulge me a little bit, uh, with, um, and I don't wanna take up too much time, um. You know, I, I remember Kathy talking about one for the books at directors' meetings. And it being, you know, the author at somebody's house, and you sat, you talked about the book, but prior to it sort of being that big. Fundraiser for the, the building.
It was always a fundraiser for the building, um, it started, uh, Suzy Merrill started it. Um, and, but before that, what they did was they had. People gave dinners. And however many people you could have. And. The host chose a book. And the people who were. Signing up for the dinners didn't choose the house that they wanted to go visit. They chose which book they wanted to talk about at dinner. And so, it was a blind, it was kind of a blind date type thing. Um, when they went to the cup, they stopped the dinners, because again, we hit a point where people were spending some of their dinners. And they were making a thousand dollars.
Right.
At, at that dinner, and the person spent three thousand dollars on the food. But it was a great way to talk about the library, and it got a lot of people interested in the library, so that it did a lot of recruiting.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the. I think it is, yeah.
But, um, and then they went to the cocktail parties, and the cocktail parties were. One, because it was easier on the hosts, and you could host a lot more people, a sit-down dinner. And my mother did it, and we have a big house, and she could handle twelve people. The cocktail party, when I did it, we had forty, so there's. There's a lot of difference in the money.
Well, the idea would be.
But if you're not working somebody for the money, which I. You know, that's a different situation, but the author picked the. Author picked the book that they wanted to talk about, and then people were told where the authors were gonna be. Um, and so, I did hear a couple of people saying, oh, I wanna see that house, I've never been to that house, so they were kind of doing it. In a little bit of the house tour way. They wanna go to so-and-so's house, and. I really liked the. You pick the book, and then. You don't know which house you're gonna go to, and that might be a good thing to go back to, because. The same people were hosting the one for the books, and so, once people had been to my house and been to Bob's. And, and too, once you've been to the house, and you didn't really.
Wanna go back.
I mean, people that weren't signing up to go back.
Can I ask one more, one more question? Um. Now, it's two questions, cause I, I could ask a question, um. In terms of cocktail party versus sit-down dinner, if people were. Selecting where they were going based upon the book and the author. I would imagine the conversation was more. Book-centric when it was a sit-down dinner, cause you sort of, it was a smaller group, and. You all had to.
I actually never went to one of that, one for the books.
But as.
Only my mom.
But as a cocktail party, like, was there any?
There was, it depended on, um, who the author was, um. What would happen would be the host would introduce the author, and then the author would talk, and it was how much. So. I hosted the El Doctoro, he didn't wanna talk about the book. At all, he wanted to talk about the fact that New York City was selling. Um, the, was in the process of selling a library. And he wanted them to not sell the library, so he talked about that.
Well, that could be interesting, too.
It was very interesting, it was not. I, you know, personally, I kind of wish I hadn't wasted time reading the book. You know, I would still try to ask. Not on my job, on my own time, um, but then, I. I, um. Hosted. Play then, and he was fantastic, he talked about the book, and everybody was into it, and it was great, so. No, I didn't talk, I hosted first, um, Ellen first, and he was, he was great, he talked about his book, and he was great. Yeah, Doctoro was, was touching, um, but. You know, and I. You know, went to, um. Uh, would be interesting, Meg. Um, Woolitzer, she was amazing. Um, but I also really enjoyed the book, so it was a good match for me, and she talked about the book, and she talked about. You know, it, it's not a reading.
Well, you see, that's the, that's the other part of it, is that. I'd like to get the, the, the concept started again. And then we, then we can leave it up to whether it's the host, or, you know, whatever.
As I said, I would. I would love to see it come back, cause I would love to take part in it, um, it has to be in the fall, cause we tried the spring, and nobody wanted to do it this spring. I wanted to do it in the spring, because we were doing it as a fundraiser, and we kept hitting other fundraisers in the fall.
Yeah.
That, that were, so we, it was like, if we could get the money in the spring, that would be a better time. Um, but, I think in the fall, if you're not really gearing towards money, that would be fantastic, because I think you'd get.
Yeah, cause I think people get scared away, if they know they're gonna get hit up.
Yeah.
For money, one way or the other, I would rather just. Create the community, and when you plant that seed, then we get them in, and then just. Give them a little taste.
So again, one for the books was a, was a board ad hoc committee that came together to do that, right? So, I think, I think what I'm hearing is, Michael would like there to be an ad hoc. Committee to, to explore putting one for the books back together?
Yeah, there's, there's, and, and, and I would get involved with that, but there's other. Functions that, you know, that I wanted to discuss, and maybe. This would be part of that ad hoc committee, cause it's not just one for the books, there are other.
Yeah.
Events and things that we could say, okay, and it could be even a standing committee, or, I'm, I'm not entirely sure yet, but that was just one of the things. The last thing, uh, two things that I just wanted to bring up, and I had discussed this with Kelly, was, we've always talked about bringing. Younger people in, in teens, and, and I would like to start. The, a teen movie festival. Here. Where we have local teens who are submitting different types of, um, movies, whether it's documentaries, whether it's little dramas. That they have created. And you make them say no more than five minutes or whatever, and we have a new teen librarian that is coming in. And just say, and I spoke with, um, Ms. Catalotto at Pearson High School. And she is all on board with it, because we had a photo exhibit recently, recently, and we even had one here. With the Pearson, uh, students, and they are. Just incredibly talented, there is nothing that deals with. Uh, video or moving arts or things of that nature, and I think that would just pull people in, and we could do it. Locally, depending on what your, uh, teen librarian and you wanna do, locally, we can expand it out to the extent, we can expand it out, however we want. Uh, Kevin Verbercy said they do one, uh, in Three Village School District Libraries up over there, and he says it's, it's very, very popular. And that, I think, would pull, uh, you know, the teens in as far as that's concerned. Um, I still need to get with you on, um, again, with this lecture series and something, cause. I have had several different people who want to. They're all ready, they're geared up and ready to do it, when people want, uh, wanted to do a fishing. You know, it's their, their avid, avid fly fisherman, world-class fly fisherman, and they go all over the world, and they have. Tentacles out to a lot of people who. Love this idea of the library, and they themselves want to do other, uh, they wanna. Participate in other lectures, whether it's news communication paper, uh, newspaper writing, broadcast, news, acting, film, music. So, I think that's going to springboard there, and that's all part of this community outreach and whatever, um, so, any of these other types of events. Need to tell me who it's going to be that. We will, we're gonna speak with, and then we can do that, I have no problem getting involved in, in going for the books discussion. Um, and, uh.
And we can certainly, you know, once. Rachel, Rachel is back soon, um, for, for programming, but also, you know, like. Um, you know, once we get Liz on board, and once we get her back on board, you know, a lot of that stuff for programming is. Absolutely doable, Film Festival, I think, is, is an easy. Easy enough thing for, for Liz to do, cause she's, she's done a lot of large-scale programs in her career. Um, where I do, would like the, the board to. To be sort of. More involved with programming, um, would be in the resurrection of that one for the books, just because the professional staff here. Um. Where, we're all new here, right, and so, I think we would benefit greatly from, um. The, the, um, experience of the board, since one for the books really was a board-generated.
Alright, great, so let's, you know, I'll, let me, you know, uh, you know, spearhead that.
Okay.
You know, if you like, I guess we target in towards a full. Full release.
Okay, um, and if you wanna do it, well, you start in April.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great, well, that was a good time today.
So, can, can Robin put in the minutes that an ad hoc, one for the books committee was created, and it's Michael and Ann? Is that okay?
I have no problem.
Okay.
As far as the teams go. Excuse me?
There are people from the community who were on it before, um. Not all of them are available now, um, but we will, some of them unfortunately have plaques for. Which is.
Not having plaques.
Um, and some people, but we should find some community members to take to or admit, otherwise, it will be your house and my house.
Right, no, e- exactly, and I figured that we would do something like you pick half a dozen. Or a dozen different homes or whatever it is, and then we go from there, and we can discuss that.
Yeah.
And I think we'll, I think we'll have good community participation, especially if we set it out, uh, for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, teens, I was here the other night, and Tyler Penny. Had the writing class, and there were a good dozen.
Oh, we had some.
Grown so much since.
Yeah.
Kids were.
One, one of our new librarians caught maker-outers, and I was like, congratulations. Wow, yeah, I was like.
JJML's a make-out.
I, I have rules, you know, like, stay in school, don't do drugs, no library babies.
We did create a make-a-space.
That's right, no, no, the only library.
Okay, Park Board, Diane. I'm not gonna say anything.
The park, fourth met on February eighth. And my main. Highlights of that meeting was, the Easter egg hunt will be back after a three-year hiatus. And, hey, I wondered myself, would we ever see them come back, it's coming back. And then the, uh, park was evaluated by. It's Robin STHD, which stands for Southern County Health Department. With respect to, um, inspecting the property, looking for areas that looked like they were especially tick-prone areas. Like areas where there's, um, like fallen trees, wood piles and leaves, et cetera, and they provided a very thorough. It's the same, cannot avoid ticks, but. Areas, especially the trails and areas where there's like, so if they get. Fenced off or whatever, so that the public knows to stay away, but they answered a lot of kiosks last year. Which will continue doing with, um. Spray of inflammation about ticks, but at this point, people should know, some areas you just don't go into. But then there's always. Goes in the many ways, so. Don't do much about that, then, I'm, I'm sure I don't have to go into this in detail, I think you're all aware of the situation. With the Morriston property. The school district. And the plans, the original plans for the school district to, uh, redo certain fields. At the park, and they're gonna have this bond issue, but the deal breaker was that the park will not accept. Artificial turf, under any circumstances in the park. So, that led the school district to look for the smartest and every, every property. And now, we know what's going on there, they don't want it there either, but, um. The park board does have a committee that's working with, um. So, with the school board, kind of back and forth about, you know, what's good, so I'm very happy that a certain person provided you with weeds. So, I just wanna give you an update, this is, if you're interested, otherwise, I'll just.
I just wanna specify, it's weeds.
Okay, what, okay, so what the school district wants to do is hire the most expensive. Turf company in the world, they did the turf field for the, um. World Cup, okay? They have not done anything in the United States, so it, it's a, a hybrid product, where they say ten percent, or pass it around, is this stuff.
And this is, this is at the Marston?
This is where they're, this is what they would like, they, so they have this company come. And it's ninety percent real grass, ten percent this stuff. But it requires all sorts of like underground equipment, special equipment to cut it, yada, yada, yada. So, needless to say, um, the CPF. They will not report something that involve, if the school was to put in turf. But I'm concerned they could possibly be swayed with this product that's ninety percent real grass.
But I'm concerned they could possibly be swayed with this product that's ninety percent real grass and it would have that in it. So anyway, we talk about this stuff at park board meetings, you know, back and forth. I know we've all have our opinions. I don't need to go any further with that. But I just thought this one does something to show. Life and his president said that until I started coming to their meetings, they were really quiet and sleeping and then. Every, I will, I. Age broke loose once they started with this plan. School district, you know, this town issue renovate the park. So these meetings get really interesting. Um, but the happiness is gonna be Easter egg.
How many members are on the board?
Um, good question.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's. It's why those meetings take so long. Yeah, and it's. It's, it's very interesting. The whole history here, you know, most people in South Harbor do not know that the park is. You know, but that's part of the. That has been intended. Obviously, the major source of income for the park is the school district that pays about two hundred thirty thousand dollars a year for using the wheels that have them. And there is a rental property on the. It, it's really interesting, interesting side part of history too. So that's, that was after the park.
Now, old business, we get to the ever popular H V A C.
You know, I think I gave you all the information on the H B C and in trips and grabs and bits and pieces. The hose is out of the ground. It's still here just in case, uh, we have to look at putting these, some work back together. We're waiting for the plumbers to remove piping for testing and then send that, you know, have. The, um, you know, be grosser, look at that. Um, and then also we're waiting for the report from, from Lizardos, so. The, the important part is the well sir function. Um, and that's, that's my H V L C update.
Okay, great. New business, approval of New York State annual report. Does Kelly work to the wee hours on?
I did, um, so that's, that's the annual report. The numbers are the numbers. I always, um, when I would discuss the annual report. And I may have said this last year to you all, but, um, you know, in previous times when I present this report as a reminder. It's sort of written in such a way that it is geared towards school district, public libraries, and maybe not association libraries. So sometimes we're putting square pegs in round holes. Um, but the, it is what it, it is what it is. If anybody has any questions, I can, I can do my best to answer them. The real sort of big changes is sort of having conversations. About, um, that word that I can't say synchronous, asynchronous synchronous programs. So you'll see that that's in there, um. You know, page fifty six, number of synchronous programs. So. Um, one of the things that that's sort of saying is when COVID happened and we all sort of went to. Hybrid programming and we're doing sort of make and takes as programs. You know, the state was sort of like, well, that doesn't count. If you planned about somebody a craft box, like that doesn't count as a library program. So that's why we've come up with this term synchronous.
Does anybody ever get back to you on these?
Uh, it's filed, it's filed with states. Some, what happens is, once it is approved and it goes, um. I submit it, um. I believe it is Roger Reyes at S C L S looks them all over and just make sure like, you know, something weird isn't in there like. You know, one of the numbers, you know, like, I'm on page fifty seven, so attendance is asynchronous programs. Just make sure that, you know, it doesn't say five hundred and six people instead of five thousand sixty two, like anything that looks weird. Um, but generally speaking, you know. It goes to the state and the state looks at it and they're like, that's interesting. And then they.
But the purpose of it isn't like a level of compliance. It's more.
It, it is also a level of compliance. So what you'll see is, um, there's also. You know, they want to know who the trustees are. They want to make sure that, you know, you're doing what you're supposed to do this, fiscally. And then they also want to make sure that you're meeting the minimum standards. So you're open a specific number. You're required by New York State minimum standards. To be open a specific number of hours a week. We always exceed that minimum standards. Do you, do you have a bathroom? Yes, we have a bathroom that's open to the public. So it's just making sure you hit all those minimum standards. So like, if they were to look and be like, oh, the John Chume Memorial Library doesn't have a bathroom. That's weird. Like, that's.
They probably would contact you.
They would not pack us and be like, what's, what's up? Um, or if we were closed. For, you know, we didn't hit that minimum number of hours in a year. They would be like, why is the library closed? But you have to put these notes in. So we would be like, the library was closed because of COVID. Or, you know, which was something that ended up on everybody's report in twenty twenty. So.
Okay, so we have to vote on this. So. I have a motion to approve the New York State annual report. I would move.
So the last thing we have here is Dan's, um. The Dan's one thing that he's, he asked me to get done while he is in California. That would be the estimates for the flooring, which came in at thirty five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. When you look at it, you can see that it says yellow area and blue area. When we first started working with commercial flooring. About this time last year, um, we had asked for a couple of different price quotes, you know, what would it cost just to do? The actual, um, this tile flooring, um, I don't know why I thought tap dancing would help. Um, versus the exploring and the rug, it was decided that we would do the entire lower level in one cohesive bit of flooring. So the yellow area and the blue area is, is rug versus what's already rubber tile. Um, what was chosen is the.
One is blue, because they're both yellow.
They're both yellow.
I mean, the colors are good.
The but, so the yellow, so this was, I had a, um. The blue area is the carpet.
Okay, thank you.
The yellow area is the rubber tile.
Oh, yeah.
And yellow and blue are related to the color highlighter I use on the floor plan. It was very arts and crafty.
Um, understood now.
And so the, the, um. Buildings and Ground Committee, Max, um, they took the advice of the previous Buildings and Grounds Committee with regards to vinyl tile. Um, that looks, instead of using a vinyl tile that looks like wood, um, to go with a tile that looks, looks like tile. Um, so I brought, I brought this, um. Don't look at the colors, um, because I know Ann loves that green. But the color we are going with is winter pleats. In the groove, not the stride, because the stride looks a little more like, like wood. So if you want to see, it's actually this very exciting color here. Um.
That's the one I didn't like.
That's, stop that. You love that color. There's gonna be no more carpet on the lower level. And what's great about that, um, is that we will be able to do everything. Um, and this is unlike the Noraplan flooring, which we had, which you cannot use, um. Soap on, um, it's actually meant to be washed with the Noraplan cleaning system, which we did not have. Um, this can actually be washed with, um.
Anything.
Anything, um, and it's a little more durable. Um, and in the children's room, there will be, as part of the sort of refresh of that space, the glow up, as I called it in our. In our spring newsletter, um. You know, we're gonna obviously keep that round circle carpet that goes in the story of time circle that we're talking about. You know, with just a couple of areas where we'll, we'll have something that if we need to move it, we can.
What is the estimated time of, uh, for this work to be done?
For this flooring, um, you know, they, he said it's, it's quick, um. Since we are redoing the stacks, um, and also, you know, um. The, the millwork that's out there, really what we need to do is hear back from them. And when that's going to be done, but ultimately, you know, everything, once everything is out of here. They've got a blank canvas and they can come in and like, it's real easy for them to do, because they're not working around. Equipment, right? They're not working around a desk. They're literally laying floor in a empty room.
They're days, not weeks.
Yeah, they're, they are, they're.
Yeah, we were talking about a week.
Yeah.
I would think this would take only a few days.
They, he said, that's what he said. He said, it's gonna take a couple of days and he goes. And they can come in and, and start putting the stacks. The time consuming part of this is going to be. The stacks and the millwork and then getting all of the, the materials back.
I know the brown, um, stack in the children's room breaks apart, but. I'm not gonna get that out, I mean.
It's, it's in pieces and they'll.
Break it, and so you'll just take it completely apart.
Move on. Richard's done it before and he can do it again, um. But, um, yeah.
We will also talk about a, uh, portable storage.
We did talk about portable storage in a pod. I'm kind of hoping. There's stuff that we can store at S C L S, um.
And did you?
And or, I have not yet, because I don't know the scope of what we need to store. So really, the conversation I need to have is, um, you know, library movers have to come in and say. All right, this is what it's gonna cost to move all this stuff to the pod or to, you know, uh, the storage place. Um, and that's gonna, you know, include measurements and square feet and all of those settings. Um, I think primarily, it's gonna be all the stuff that's on this. Lower level that we're going to have to store offsite or, um, if the village will let us in a pod in. A pod in the street, um.
Yeah, right.
Doesn't sound dramatic. At the Wailing, possibly. We could probably talk something about that. One of the issues I know. We had in Bridge Hampton, um, after COVID, when we were reopening, we had wanted to put a pod in the library backyard. And they could not. Get it in, even though, you know, we did have to deasement with the neighbors and, you know, there was a gate. They still said, no way, it's still to them. So there's, there's that to contend with. You know, they do have a lot of property over at the Wailing Museum. They've always been very good neighbors to us. I just don't know. Because I think. I haven't been back there since we participated in the Hampton's Pride Parade and, um, stored our float back there, but I'm not sure. They would have the clearance there.
Get through the gate.
Yes. So, so here's the thing, we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll cross that bridge when we get there, um. And I know what we're looking at in terms of storage. I mean, you know, S C L S might be able to take some of our stuff too. Um, and I think that because of what is being done on the second and third floors to, um, allow for that team space. Um, the segments of the collection, which we are talking about, really aren't that big. So it might be as simple as, um, the library movers to just pick up those stacks where the books are currently sitting. And move them into the historic part of the building to, you know, sort of rest there. While the new stacks are being installed. So again, I think it's just this lower level that we're really looking at, um, having to store somewhere other than here.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the estimate on page ninety six. From Commercial Flooring Specialists Limited for thirty five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. I will second, oh, four.
Yay.
Yes. Okay, one does, anything after all this?
Speaking today, and I know a couple of other libraries provide for a lot of each that issues that are similar.
Which ones?
South Country now too?
Yeah, they're going towards.
Yeah.
Okay. No executive session? Okay, motion to adjourn.
At seven twenty five?
Yes.
All right, well done.